All right, thank you. We will convene the October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three Board of County Commissioners Meeting. We could please have a roll call?
Commissioner Pinter?
Here.
Commissioner Baca?
Here.
Commissioner Odoricio?
Here.
Commissioner Tedesco? Commissioner Henry.
I ask that everyone please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, the agenda is approved, and we begin this morning by publicly celebrating the winners of the county's employee and Team of the Season Awards as we recognize those honored for the summer two thousand twenty-three season. These employees have gone above and beyond to demonstrate outstanding service and dedication to the county and to its residents. We will first announce the Team of the Season winner, followed by the Employee of the Season category winners, and finish up with introducing the overall Employee of the Season winner, and then following that, we will have a group photo. The winners and their supervisors are here with us today, and they have a chance to speak and will read their nominations. At this time, I hand the mic over to Commissioner Lynn Baca.
Great, good morning, everyone. So we begin this this morning with awarding Team of the Season, and we're joined this morning by Brian, excuse me, Brian Staley, Director of Public Works and the Flood Recovery Team. Would you please come down to the podium while I announce your award? So the Team of the Season Award recognizes project teams and work groups that have successfully collaborated outside their normal routine work duties to accomplish a significant goal that positively impact the workplace or the Adams County community. The Public Works Flood Recovery Team was nominated by Dave Tuttle with this submission, and I quote, "I am writing to recognize Public Works' exceptional efforts in both emergency flood and wildfire response. Their swift action in deploying flood control measures and drainage management has significantly mitigated the impact of floods on our community, preventing further damage to infrastructure. Through continuous monitoring of weather conditions and water levels, they have been able to anticipate potential flood risks and preposition resources to respond promptly and effectively. And the Public Works team has also demonstrated exceptional firefighting skills in enabling them to quickly contain and extinguish fires during emergencies. Their technical expertise and coordinated efforts have played a pivotal role in minimizing property damage and protecting lives. Their exceptional preparedness, quick response, and effective mitigation efforts in the face of these challenging situations make them the most deserving candidate for the Team of the Season Award." So Brian, good morning. Would you and anyone from this amazing team like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you, and thank you, Board, Executive Team, and the Recognition Committee for taking the time to recognize the flood recovery effort this year. We thought summer would never get here because it just kept raining and raining. We are well over a hundred percent of our annual rainfall in Colorado this year, of our average annual rainfall, I should say. And the team behind me here in front of you today was responsible for the effort of keeping our roads open, safe, and passable for emergency responders, responding also to incidents of wildfires and bridge washouts and the like. Part of the team in flood recovery, or the first line of defense, I guess, is our team of operations professionals, roadway professionals that are out there, operating graders and heavy equipment to keep the roads in shape and passable. They're also backed up by our stormwater and construction inspectors, engineers, right-of-way professionals and administrators. All of them are second to none and give the resources to our people on the grounds to ensure that they're able to take care of our residents. And of course, our team is backed up by a much larger organization who all played a role as well in supporting the Public Works team, including budget and finance, information and technology and infrastructure, people and culture, community safety and well-being, community and economic development, parks, open space and cultural arts, and the fleet and facilities management team. Each of them had a role to play in the flood recovery effort in supporting the Public Works team. Now, I'd like to introduce Dave Tuttle, our Operations District Three manager, to say a few words about his team. Dave operates out of our Strasburg facility, and they're tasked with maintenance of our most remote gravel roads and bridges in the county.
Good morning, Commissioners. I guess the reason I submitted this was the sacrifice that Public Works makes every year between snow and ice, the countless Thanksgivings and Christmases that they have given up. To these recent spring storms that we had with the flooding, the endless weekends that they sacrificed with their families, their summer vacations that they sacrificed with their families. And I'm proud of them and all of Public Works. As far as the wildfires, it's something that goes unrecognized. Not too many people are aware that we fight wildfires. When the guy sees smoke, they know there's fire, and they respond, and usually beating the first responders by twenty to thirty minutes. When they arrive on scene, they start cutting, they get ahead of that fire, and they start cutting a fire line at their structures, they cut fire lines around the structures. After the fire is extinguished, they go ahead and they cut a fire line around the burn area. So we're the first ones to arrive on scene, and we're the last ones to leave that scene, and they really don't get recognized for what they do. And so that's why I submitted this, and I want to thank you guys for selecting us for Team of the Season.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Since this is a Team of the Season, could everyone who's part of the team please stand?
So I just have a few remaining items on my remarks. You know, I want to thank this team very much, and you know, the Commissioners are elected at large, so we're elected countywide, but we have to live in the district, and I think this one is so significant because the totality of the flooding, significant flooding, to the point where we had up to twenty-eight road closures, was all on District Five, which is my district, of Brighton, Eastern Adams County, swings around the airport and picks up the most northern communities in Aurora. And Dave, I am so proud of you and your team and the Public Works team for submitting this. It was substantial. I want to thank the Public Works team, Dave and Janet Lundquist, Renee Valdez, I know there were a couple of others. I did take a tour, go on a road tour, and spent a half a day touring the facilities, touring some of the major flood damage areas in Eastern Adams County. There are a few roads that are still in need of repair. It's substantial damage, more than we can take on in a season. So I thank you very much. You know, Dave is up here, Dave and Brian and Janet gave an update. So to all the Public Works employees that worked on the flood recovery and those that support you, we were informed very early on, and we were in a meeting, actually, when all of the road closures came through, and we were sitting with Janet. But it was the time away from your families, the weekends that you worked, Memorial Day weekend, and taking off Fourth of July and Memorial Day to celebrate your families and to get in some downtime, because we know that you were out there night and day, and the conditions were miserable. I'm not a fan of the rain. I'm still happy the sun's shining today because I need part of my summer back, but congratulations, Dave, and to the entire Public Works team, Brian and Janet, I see you're both in the audience. So the Public Works Flood Recovery Team has received a crystal trophy in honor of their teamwork. So congratulations and thank you to this team for their life-saving efforts. Now we will introduce our Employee of the Season category winners, and at the end, we'll take a picture with the team. So thank you so much.
The first Employee of the Season Award today is for the Extra Effort category, which honors individuals who provide a unique level of service that fosters good business relationships and provides an enhanced positive reputation. We have Katie McDougall from our Director of Human Services here along with Lauren Rodriguez. You guys coming on down? Okay. Lauren's nomination came from Team McClellan. Lauren is a tremendous asset, not only to our team, but the entire division. She never says no and always jumps ready in to help. She makes referrals for childcare and doesn't hesitate to make calls to daycares and care providers so that she can make sure the referral is accurate. She often drives to clients or care providers to get signatures. She goes to medical clinics to get medical documentation for anyone in need. She's always willing to help transport children and supervise visits. Lauren often offers help, the tasks before others even recognize a need. She does all of this with a kindness, a sense of humor, and a positive attitude. Lauren is truly amazing and has made Adams County a better place for all who have the pleasure of working with her. It looks like we don't have Katie today, so I want to make sure I have my glasses on. So it's Carrie, right? Carrie, if you want to come in and introduce your team and Lauren, and if you want to say a few words.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Commissioners. I'm Carrie Daggett, Deputy Director over Children and Family Services for Adams County. And I have with me here today Lauren, the award winner, as well as her manager, Heather Drake, who's going to say a few words. Thank you so much for recognizing Lauren and her efforts.
Good morning. There's so much I could add to what was written. I mean, there is no barrier that Lauren can't overcome. She does a great job. She does always have a positive attitude, even though she has a lot on her plate. She's a lot of fun to work with, all of the things that you deal with every day. I would expect maybe not such a happy attitude, but truly, if there's anything anyone needs, she is always willing to help and will arrange things. Well deserved.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you very much. I love my job, and I love the people I work with.
Right.
Okay, well, congratulations. Thank you, Lauren, for all you do for Adams County, children and their families, children who come to you and are in need of your services, are folks who have gotten themselves clearly in a pickle and need that extra effort, and so it's an honor to honor you today for the Extra Effort category.
All right, and the next award is the Making It Happen category, which honors employees who achieve a desired outcome despite facing adversity, such as a lack of resources, unexpected challenges, et cetera. Please welcome back Director of Human Services Katie McDougall, along with Soraya. Look, Soraya received this nomination from Elisa Mangian. And, come on down. Oh, yeah, Katie's not here. Sorry about that. Carrie. Soraya works tirelessly for the children and families of Adams County. A specific example of her exemplary work is when she recently took over a very difficult case that had to be opened for a year. The family only speaks Spanish with two children in foster care, and the father was deported. The case was stalled in part because of the challenge of reunifying the children internationally. Once the case was assigned to Soraya, who is bilingual and well-versed in immigration processes, she dove right in and spent countless hours addressing the issues and barriers in the case. Within a month of having the case, she was able to re-initiate visits with the kids and their mother, who hadn't visited them in person for eight months. She reached out to the consulate to discuss returning the children to their father. She spoke to the local law enforcement in the town where the father lived and was able to reunify the children with their father. Had it not been for her ability to navigate barriers in a completely different country, this family would not be together today. Adams County is beyond lucky to have such a strong, talented, caring, and skilled employee. Do you guys like to say anything?
Thank you again, Commissioners, for recognizing our employee, and we're very proud of Soraya's efforts, and I'll turn it over to Heather Drake, her manager.
Soraya is also, has lots of energy. She has been doing this work for very, very long time, but yet, when she gets a case, she's excited about it. Usually, people run in the other direction. One area that we fall short of that was driving our cultural needs, Soraya helps make sure we are getting closer to it. And truly, for this family, those children would not have been.
Thank you. Would you like to say something, Soraya?
I'm just grateful that Adams County provided this family the resources so I could fly down to Honduras with the girls and ensure their safety, and I'm grateful to be an Adams County employee. I didn't know if all counties would have given us the resources to make that happen. It was quite the trek.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, and thank you for your incredible efforts to return in this family together. So thank you. All right, Soraya.
Okay, our next category is the Performance Accelerator. This is a new category this year that recognizes a nominee who accelerates team and organizational performance by developing strategic, innovative, and/or continuous improvement solutions that result in improved outcomes. We invite Tanya Wilson-Brezinho and Carrie from Human Services to the podium. Tanya was nominated by Maritza Espinoza, who wrote, "Tanya is fairly new to our Family Services team at Head Start. However, Tanya's time has made a difference and an impact on our team. Tanya is always going above and beyond to grow as a professional and improve our community. She connects with the education, mental health services, and health teams when her work involves a family. The Head Start Family Services team celebrated a big accomplishment by being fully enrolled by May thirty-first. Tanya supported that by going above and beyond the planned goal by enrolling the North Glenn Center and creating a waitlist for our Commerce City Sunshine Center. Tanya is always willing to help all our different teams within Head Start, and it is refreshing to have new employees who are always willing to make the extra effort for the community we serve." So Katie and Tanya, would you like to say a few words? Actually, Carrie and Tanya.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm Susanna. I'm the Administrator for Head Start. Thank you for the space, and I just want to say that I am honored to be able to work alongside somebody like Tanya. She truly, truly is a go-getter. She has such a drive. She has such a passion for serving the community. So I just want to share that with you, and I will let her supervisor share.
Morning, Commissioners. My name is Maritza Espinoza. I am Tanya's supervisor. It's just been very amazing to work with someone with such an ingenuous mind to help the community and come up with creative ways, and always is willing to just take that extra effort without having to ask. So, yeah, I'm very proud of her.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Tanya. I just want to give a special thanks to everybody that I work with, all my colleagues, kitchen staff, mental health services, of course, all the teachers, maintenance and facilities that is actually here today as well, and also my leadership. Both Maritza and Leslie are very new to this position, and I'm very thankful that they've been able to help me kind of cement my position and be a performance accelerator. So, yeah, thank you so much.
Well, congratulations to Tanya. You know, we were at the Head Start Sunshine Facility, and we thank you, all of you, for all the work you do for our families and our kiddos. So thank you so much, and congratulations.
Our next category is Success in Practice. So Carrie Daggett, don't go anywhere. Our nominee is Alexa Hylim from Human Services. We invite her to come down to the podium with her team. The Success in Practice category honors individuals who play an integral role in successful intervention, problem resolution, and improvement with a customer resident or a process of Adams County. Betsy Colstein nominated Alexa by writing, "Alexa is new to her role doing child death investigations, institutional abuse investigations, and human trafficking investigations, when she began to carry the load of two caseworkers as her counterpart has been out on maternity leave. You would never know the extent of her workload based on the patience, time, and effort she gives to all of her clients. She's compassionate with families who have had a child pass away due to child abuse. She's supportive of families who have children currently missing and possibly engaged with human trafficking, and she is a professional. And through the licensed childcare centers, it's professional and thorough, with licensed childcare centers being investigated for child abuse. In her first high-level assessment of her own, she diffused a possible standoff with law enforcement outside of business hours by negotiating the surrender of a child to the custodial relative. She remained calm and family-centered, advocating for the clients and to other professionals. Alexa's workload is challenging under the best of circumstances, and during this last season, she had to step up. She is a shining example of what it means She is a shining example of what it means to go beyond the basic expectations in a job description. She makes her team and the county look good by how she carries herself and community, and how she advocates for and serves her clients." Carrie and Alexa, would you like to say a few words?
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you so much for recognizing Alexa. She, in her position, she is in a very unique place with having to collaborate and work in a very united approach with our daycare providers, as well as law enforcement in our community. She works with some of families on their very, very worst day, and so we just really appreciate her going above and beyond in her empathetic and compassionate approach with families and how she engages with them. And so we're really honored that she's serving on our team and are looking forward to seeing the work that she'll continue to do in her relatively new role. So I'll turn it over to Alexa if she has anything to say.
I want to say thank you, and have a good day. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you for coming down. And Alexa, congratulations. And it's beautiful to hear that you're a blessing to everyone you interact with on really rough periods in their lives. So thank you. Congratulations, Alexa.
Next, we present the Unsung Hero Award. This is an award for, again, can we bring down Carrie Daggett? And Ron Cordova. The Unsung Hero category honors individuals for providing high-quality, reliable, and critical work that if not completed, would compromise operations. This person functions behind the scenes, is willing to improve work situations, and does so without fanfare or being prompted. Ron's poetic nomination from Suzanne Ramirez reads, "There once was a man named Ron Cordova. He is our supernova. He has a big heart and shares it with Head Start. Although he manages facilities, he helps children grow their abilities. Always goes above and beyond and is never late to respond. For the fest, he paid for a tiny train while children rode it in the rain. They had lots of fun. Thank you, Ron. He donated popcorn and classroom supplies. He's a hero in our eyes. He's only a phone call away. He's there to help every single day. Always fixing our facilities, nothing's ever beyond his abilities. In the cold weather, he clears the snow without complaint and helps cover classrooms without constraint. There's nothing, he's nothing short of divine. He's our star which always shines. We thank you. We think you should consider this vote for our one and only Ron." So, can we have Carrie and Ron, please come down? They're not here today? Oh, there. Wow, I love that nomination.
Well, we are from Head Start. We try to do some fun things too, so.
Yes.
But really, truly, I, what can I say? I just love Ron's personality. He brings light, laughter to our team. He is always very positive, very helpful. It doesn't matter what it is he might not know, but he's the first one to say, "Is there anything I can do to help?" And he really, truly goes above and beyond any time, Saturdays, Sundays, whenever, whatever is needed. And so I am grateful that I was able to really shine a light on him and all the good work that he does and his big heart that he has for the kids, for the staff, for everything. He's just a good, human, kind-hearted human. So I just thank you for the opportunity, and congratulations.
So Susanna wanted me to bring this and share this with you. Back in 19... Most Outstanding Student, Ron Cordova. The Adams County Manpower from 1978 to 1979.
So, that wasn't because of my grades. So when Adams County placed me at an elementary school called Valley Elementary, it kind of changed my life. Stayed with that school district for 20 years, and got a college degree and went on to work for a financial institution. They're not there any longer. That's not my fault either. Then I retired for a couple of years, and then I found Head Start. And it's been a delight working there. And it's easy to do your job when you enjoy your job and you enjoy the people you work with. They're great people. They have passion. I like working there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Yeah, he needs the award back. That's awesome. Thank you, Ron. Not all the time I get to rhyme, and I appreciate the opportunity without scrutiny.
I think you try.
You're up.
Okay. Now we will present the First Responder category. So we welcome Michael Romero, along with District Attorney Brian Mason. The First Responder category, which honors individuals who are the first to respond to an emergency or threat and have the responsibility to protect the public to the best of their abilities. Tony Wayman nominated Michael by writing, "On June 1st, a hero appeared just in time. Two inmates had just escaped from the sheriff's jail transport bus near Bridge and 19th Avenue in Brighton. Luckily, Michael, who was off-duty that day, was in the same area and heard a woman yelling for help. As he approached, he saw a man with, saw a man was trying to carjack the woman's car. Michael quickly recognized the man was wearing the striped jumpsuit of an inmate from the jail and had likely escaped. Unarmed and without concern for his personal safety, he intervened, and the inmate tried to run away. Not wanting him to hurt someone else, Michael pursued and grabbed the inmate. The inmate physically fought and kicked him to try to get away. However, Michael held on and restrained the escaped inmate until the police arrived. He is a true professional every day of his life, but on this day, he also was a true superhero. We are honored to have him as part of the 17th Judicial District DA's office. Michael is more than just the winner of this category. He has also been chosen as the overall Summer Employee of the Season. So congratulations, Michael. As such, he is receiving $350 in cultural action points and a trophy in addition to a certificate of recognition. So District Attorney and friend Brian Mason and Michael, would you like to speak?
Thank you, and have a good day. That was the best speech so far. That was great. Thank you, Commissioners. It's my privilege to stand up here and recognize one of our distinguished colleagues, Mike Romero. And the fact that he was nominated in the First Responder category is somewhat misleading because Mike is not a first responder. He doesn't patrol. He's not out driving around in our communities. He's not typically responding to emergencies. But on this day, I think he were coming out of a doctor appointment. He was walking out of a doctor appointment in downtown Brighton and saw somebody in jail clothes committing a crime, trying to hijack a car, carjack a car, and heard a woman screaming. And this man was not armed. He did not have any backup, and it is not his job to intervene while crimes are occurring. And yet, that's what he did. I don't use the word hero very often, but what Mike Romero did that day was truly heroic. The fact that two inmates had inexplicably escaped from custody and were literally presenting a clear and present danger to our community did not stop Mike Romero from acting. And because of his actions, the community was safer that day, and no one was harmed. And so that, in my view, deserves a pretty big round of applause and maybe a standing ovation for a true hero in this community, Mike Romero.
Mike?
I just want to thank everybody for coming here today, and I don't know, I guess I was at the right place at the right time, and thank God, nobody got hurt.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Michael.
Well, from a supernova to a superhero, we certainly have remarkable employees in many different categories. Our Employee of the Season category award winners will all receive 5,000 culture and action points and a certificate of recognition. To all our winners, thank you for your service to Adams County and to our whole community. We'd also like to thank our employees for joining us today, both in person and those watching on the live stream and or on our YouTube channel, in support of your colleagues and as they are honored for their work. And I hope you celebrate them as they come back home to their offices as well. We encourage you to nominate deserving coworkers moving forward. You don't all have to write poems, but the poems were nice. The Fall Employee and Team of the Season nominations are now open, so please visit my Adams for more information on how you can nominate a deserving coworker or team. We'd like to take a group photo with the team and employee winners, so if everyone who won tonight could come, this morning, I'm used to doing these events in the evening, everyone who won this morning, if you come down to the front and we can take a photo. And individual photos are available in the lobby, so you can have something to commemorate this day. And to all the employees of the season and individuals today, congratulations.
What's your reward?
Everyone turn around?
All right, guys, are we ready? All right, here we go.
Good job, guys.
I crock-honked it.
Okay. At this time, we also open the hearing up for public comment. Do we have anyone sign up to speak?
Chair, we do have three people signed up to speak on the Horse Creek Retreat land use case today.
Okay, so I asked that if there's anyone who's signed up, not, okay. Is there anyone who has not signed up for a land use issue that would like to speak now? Please come forward. Does somebody have to leave early? If it's about the land use, you can wait till we do the case? Okay. I see there's nobody. Go into the board for elected official communication. None there? Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move to approve. Second?
We have a motion in a second. We vote on the consent calendar. And that passes. Moving on to new business county manager.
Good morning, Commissioners. We have one item this morning. It's facilities-related. The item is a resolution approving Amendment 2 between Adams County and FCI Constructors Incorporated and the amount of $254,452 for the early release package number two for the Park South Maintenance Building Project Amendment 2023.931. Burnett Carlson will present this.
Good morning. Design is almost complete for the new South Parks Maintenance Building. On February 21st, 2023, the Board of County Commissioners approved an award to FCI Constructors for pre-construction services for $28,552. An early release package was approved on June 6, 2023. FCI has identified a second critical early release package needed prior to establishing the GMP. This early release package allows for purchase of long lead time items. This includes an electrical main switchboard, distribution and lighting panel boards, and the rooftop unit. Current lead times on these electrical items are as high as 22 weeks, and the rooftop unit as high as 33 weeks. Staff recommends the approval of $254,452 for the early release package number two for a total contract amount $362,333.40.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Okay? If none, do we have a motion?
Move is approved. Move is presented. Sorry. Second?
All right, we will vote. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, county attorney?
No business this morning.
Okay. Moving on to land use, we're going to take a five-minute break while you guys set up for land use. Okay, uh, moving on to land use. We're gonna take a five-minute break while you guys set up for land use. Okay, we are back. We're gonna begin at this point with the land use hearing. It's all yours, staff. Please proceed.
Good morning, commissioners. Nick Egleson with the Community and Economic Development Department. And this morning, I'll be presenting the Adams County Data Center text amendments, and this is case number PLN 2023-5. The request is for text amendments to modify the Adams County development standards and regulations. A little bit of background, in the spring of 2022, staff discovered a new type of use. Uh, this was specifically on an oil and gas site, uh, where there was the installation of a large generator as well as a shipping container on-site. And they were operating a data center that was utilizing natural gas, uh, from the wellhead. Uh, no specific use category, uh, was identified within the development standards, so it was prohibited until staff could draft regulations. And then in the summer of 2022, the county commissioners directed staff to review the regulations to add data centers, both as a primary use and as an accessory use. Um, this is just to basically give you a visual and discuss the potential community considerations of what was discovered. Again, on that, uh, well site, natural gas was being utilized from the well to power, uh, the generator, which then sends electricity to the, uh, uh, storage facility uh, to operate as a data center. Uh, so staff looked at, again, some potential community considerations, uh, some of those being, uh, noise and light pollution, specifically with noise. Uh, natural gas power generators, again, that's associated with this type of use. Uh, the engines constantly, uh, are running to produce that electricity. Uh, and data centers often contain cooling equipment, uh, such as high-powered fans that depending on the size may run up to 24/7. Um, and then looking at water usage as well, and then air pollution. Uh, specifically with air pollution, uh, that can arise from natural gas that's produced from that well bore. Uh, that may be unused during the data center process and could be vented, uh, into the air, having broader air and climate impacts. And then additionally, the conversation of natural gas into electricity, uh, and generators can produce localized air quality impacts to surrounding residents. Uh, and that would be in the form of methane VOCs and particular, uh, matter, much of which would not be produced, uh, if the gas was never combusted at all. And then finally, also looking at any type of fire and safety hazards and potential risks related to emergency response. Uh, from multiple avenues, including the data center process, could involve the combustion of flammable gas, uh, which is occurring next to the storage uh, of flammable or hazardous liquids such as crude oil and produced water. And then also, given these wells were drilled prior to county regulations, a safety and emergency response plan may not exist for the site. Uh, and the, the fire district may be unaware of its presence, uh, or any potential dangers. And then lastly, just the placement of additional equipment could pose a risk for any type of emergency access, uh, onto the site and throughout the site. Uh, so looking at the overall summary of code changes proposed, uh, chapter three, we added a, uh, data center as a primary use, uh, within the use chart. Uh, and that's within the industrial business park subcategory. And then in chapter four, we added special use performance standards, and that is specific to data centers as an accessory use again on sites like oil and gas. Uh, and again, we included things like site-specific requirements, setbacks from residential properties, minimizing the overall health and safety risks and reducing, again, that potential nuisance, uh, to the nearby public. And then chapter 11 is our definitions, so we added two definitions for primary and accessory, which I'll go over on this next slide here. Uh, so again, the first one's just your, your large type of data center, your Google, Amazon-type data center that you would, uh, typically imagine uh, large light industrial buildings. Uh, so that reads, "Data center is a building, a dedicated space within a building, or a group of buildings used for the primary purpose." Um, and we wanted to focus there on the, the primary purpose is what it serves, of housing, computer systems, and associated components such as telecommunications and storage systems. Uh, and then that second one again is the data center, uh, data, data center as an accessory use. Uh, and that states, "Data centers as an accessory use are co-located at sites producing off-grid electrical generations such as oil and gas, solar, geothermal, and wind facilities, and may include supporting equipment such as power generators, cooling units, fire suppression systems, and enhanced security features." Uh, so and staff did look at, uh, several different definitions, uh, throughout the country. It's, this is something obviously that's fairly new, so we did, um, take a little bit from other municipalities that we found and then, uh, some general data center definitions online as well. Uh, so when going through and looking at the permitting process for each of these types of data centers, just your main primary, uh, data center, that's allowed uh, with a conditional use permit in the C5 zone district. And then it is a use by right in each of our industrial zone districts. And then they would also be required to get a change in use permit and the building permit as well. And then when looking at data centers as an accessory use, this would be required, they would be required to go through the special use permit process, which would go before the Board of Adjustment. Uh, and that would be within our A2 and A3 zone districts, and then each of our commercial zone districts and each of our industrial zone districts. And then again, the requirement of a change in use and building permit. Uh, so this, I just wanted to give you a visual, uh, this is looking, again, at that accessory use. This is specifically at an oil and gas facility. The one on the left is just over 2,000 feet from any nearby residence. So some of the proposed performance standards that they would be required to meet is providing an emergency preparedness response plan, site plan and access plan, automatic shut-in capabilities, uh, and then reviewing, uh, any off-site impacts as well. And then the one on the right, you can see, uh, this, uh, oil and gas site is actually within about 300 feet of a nearby residence. They would have to provide, um, some additional performance standards in addition to those mentioned on the left. They would also need to provide a noise impact assessment, um, have a neighborhood meeting, and then provide air quality monitoring as well. When looking at the criteria for text amendments, we looked to see that it's consistent with the Adams County Comprehensive Plan. It's consistent with the purposes of these standards and regulations, and that it will also not be detrimental to the surrounding area. Uh, during the outreach and referral process, we did have multiple planning commission and Board of County Commissioners study sessions. Uh, notice was sent to, uh, multiple agencies. Those include fire, oil and gas operators as well as other industry groups. We did hold four virtual stakeholder and public outreach meetings, as well as one in-person meeting here at the government center. Uh, we did have a, a survey that was generated to, uh, each of these, uh, agencies, and they provided a lot of good feedback that helped draft the, uh, the proposed red lines. Uh, and then during the referral period, uh, with those red lines, we did receive five public and stakeholder comments, and those were outlined within the packets. Uh, so this did go to Planning Commission to a public hearing on August 10th, 2023. Uh, that, at that time, it was continued. Uh, they, uh, raised concerns regarding the definition. At that time, we did just have one definition for data centers, so uh, they, uh, would, they wanted more specifics regarding data centers, both again as that primary use versus accessory use, uh, which I presented earlier. And then, uh, during the hearing, they just, uh, requested more clarity on specific operations on those oil and gas sites, as well as what the size and scale would look like. Uh, so again, that was continued to September 28th, and at that hearing, uh, Planning Commission voted to recommend approval by a vote of four to three. And they listened to a lot of details regarding crypto mining, again, on, uh, specifically on oil and gas sites, and then they had, uh, some concerns with maybe potential for redundancy with state regulations on oil and gas sites. Uh, so with that, staff is, uh, recommending approval. We feel that it's consistent with the comp plan, uh, and that it continuously is improving the county's development standards and permitting process to meet our community needs and goals, and that it would not be detrimental to the surrounding area. Uh, and again, recommending approval with three findings of fact and one condition. And here are the findings of fact and condition, and staff is available for questions. Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Okay. Seeing none, um, we will go to the, uh, public. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this particular text amendment? Okay. Seeing none, back to the board. For action or questions or discussion. I will say, I'll take a moment just to say I appreciate staff's work on this. This is a lot of work. It looks like you guys did a lot of research and did some, uh, tried to meet with folks out in the community for stakeholding, and, um, to me, it's, looks pretty good, and we find as we proceed on this process that we needed to make some tweaks later. We can always do that. So, I think that's another fair thing for us to acknowledge, is that we're trying to catch up on changes in the community, and sometimes that means we stay nimble when we. And sometimes that means we stay nimble when we need to. So.
Chair, if I could, it appears that the system is lagging.
Yep, we'll do this by voice.
Happy to do that by voice, Erica?
Yes.
Okay. I have a comment, and I'd be happy to make the motion unless my colleague would like to make a comment before we... Okay, all right. Thank you. This was a really long journey. There's a lot of technical components here. It is the intersection of a couple different types of technology and engineering and community impact. It seems that you have been very thorough and thoughtful in the approach, and I really appreciate it. I understand there's always a concern of having local regulations and state regulations. We have adapted before, and we will continue to adapt. But having local regulations in place allows us to make sure, to the best of our ability, that we are protecting for all the reasons why we need to be taking care of our oil and gas sites, for air quality, and community, and noise, and all the different versions of community protection. So thank you for doing that, and thank you for also adding in data centers. I don't think we've seen the last of data centers. If anything, we'll see more. And this gives us a lot of food for thought and regulations to keep up with the times. And I really appreciate the thoughtful way this is put together, and the extensive community outreach and stakeholder outreach that was done to put these regulations together. I heard about it a lot during the timeframe in which this was under consideration, both from those who work in the crypto space and those who work in the oil and gas space. And I forwarded all those concerns to all of you, and you handled them very thoroughly. And I'm, would be excited to make this motion so that we can have our first regulations in the space.
Okay, thank you, Chair. So thank you, staff, for this presentation. Something that's been looked at, this, this doesn't look quite like I had envisioned, and that's why we have staff, so that they cover all the bases, consider all the uses, all the land considerations. So I do appreciate it. It's something that's been asked for by our businesses, and I think that that's really important to state, is that, you know, Adams County, we're open for business, and this was partly a business-driven initiative, and considered not only business, but economic development. It's our future. So it's very important to have this type of data center regulation on the books. I would just have a couple comments to make, and it's not because I'm advocating for it, but the oil and gas setbacks, it looks like one county is gonna increase their setbacks. I'm not suggesting that we increase it in Adams, but I'm just stating that for the record. So I think if that, when, and if that time were to come, then that's something we consider at the time, but has not come to fruition just yet. So I fully support this. So if Commissioner Pinter, you want to make the motion, I'll second that.
Yes, ma'am. All right. So I move to approve PLN 2023-5, Data Center Text Amendments with three findings of fact and one condition.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, aye. Any opposed? No one's opposed? Are you okay with that, or do you need to do the roll call?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, thank you. This passes. Thank you very much, staff. Moving on to the next one. Do you guys need time to set up, or are you good? Give you a minute.
While they're fussing, I just have to compliment you once again. We do a lot of text amendments. This one was particularly complex. And thank you for really following through in the process.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Leila Vajlon. I'm a senior long-range planner with the Community and Economic Development Department. In the case before you, is PRC 2023-15. This is Horse Creek Retreat. And the subject parcels are located west of Emboden Road from East 152nd Avenue to East 160th Avenue. This request encompasses eight total parcels that are about 288 acres in size. And this case is for a request for a comprehensive plan amendment to change the future land use designation from agriculture large-scale to residential low. And then also for a zoning map amendment to change the zoning district designation from agricultural two and agricultural three to agricultural one. The applicant this morning has requested a continuance to be able to provide additional information at a later time. So staff, because of the applicant's request, is requesting a continuance on this case. However, we do have a full presentation available if you'd like to.
Are there, are there folks here for public comment on this one? I couldn't tell from the clerks.
So what we're gonna do, thank you, before we take a comment on, or before we discuss or take any action on the continuation, what I'd like to do is make sure that people who did come, as Commissioner Pinter suggested, have an opportunity to speak on this matter. So do we have folks that are signed up to, with the, does the applicant, first of all, want to say anything about the continuation? If not, we can wait. Please come on down and state your full name and address for the record.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carl Barton, Kimley Horn and Associates, 380 Interlock in Crescent, Suite 100, Broomfield, Colorado. On behalf of the applicant, I would like to request a continuation of this case for the purposes of providing more information. We have recently been continuing to do our due diligence on the property, and one of those issues that we're very closely looking at is water. We have information that may have an impact on the future proposal. And we want to make sure that we present to this commission the most accurate understanding that we have, and give the most accurate and best information. And for that, we'd like to request a continuation so that we're able to prepare that material. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. I think this group still believes in facts, so that's good. This, is there anyone in the public that would like to please come forward? And the reason we say, please, who, let's go down that list of names first. And the reason why we're doing this is because some folks may not be able to come back in the future. Everything that is said here will be added and will be part of the public record, just in case you don't get to return for when we expect this to be continued. So go ahead, Erica.
The first person is Tiffany Neal.
Tiffany, please come on down and please state your full name and your address for the record.
Chair, can you also highlight that they can come back?
Absolutely. Thank you. Yeah, it doesn't mean you can't come back. It just means, just in case, you could say what you want here and still speak again.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Tiffany Neal. My address is 15175 Olmsted Street, Hudson, Colorado, 80642. I'm adjacent to the proposal, and I would like to ask that these be submitted to you for reviewing as part of just additional facts. So I'll try to go fast. Obviously, I was gonna say, please delay your vote today.
Mission accomplished.
We would like you to have the whole story and the relevant facts from the community members. The proposal to rezone from A3 and A2 to A1 will have a major impact on the existing neighborhoods. Ideally, after this, you will agree that rezoning some of these lots from A3 to A2 is a better solution for the existing neighborhood. I can only highlight my concerns in three minutes, hardly present a case to justify my request. As a homeowner and the VP to the Bromley Estates HOA, I speak for both. What is being proposed will affect hundreds of households. My additional content details out what I would like to include in the minutes today. What is missing and won't be shown is a beautiful flow between our existing rural properties and nature. This proposal is in direct opposition with the existing rural area. Instead, places a suburban neighborhood 10 miles from the nearest city. Additionally, this proposal is disingenuous to what is ratified over a year ago by you in the Advancing Adams Comprehensive Plan. It needs to be noted that the posted signs by the county were too poorly placed, small signs on the corner of a very low-trafficked road, out of view from the vast majority of affected parties. And this signage is no larger than two small political yard signs. I urge you to consider your constituents and the effect that these changes have on our community. And may I point out that our comments have gone unaddressed, our requests have been ignored, and we are not fairly represented in the presentation you would have seen today. Some key concerns about what is missing and things that were presented at the Planning Commission is that this violates at least six Advancing Adams Comp Plan points, including COH 1.1, 1.1.01, and 3.1, Natural Resource and Environment 1.1, 2.1, 2.1.2, all built environment and connection policies, and all policies that support the agriculture part of cultural history in 1.1. Although I would love for you to reject this, and I want to be a good neighbor. We are open to working with the county of the developer and interested parties. In closing, if I had the power to change what you're voting on today, I'd ask you to change it to an A2. I will just highlight in there that on page six of the packet I provided you is a memo that is unknown to most. It is a memo that has greatly impacted my property and the 48 residents who were granted water rights at Bromley Estates to the Upper and Lower Arapaho Aquifers. I highlighted this section. I apologize, the writing is terrible. It is very hard to read, and there are specific codes too, which only the Department of Resources will understand. But I did have them decode it for me a year and a half ago when I found out that there is no water within two miles readily accessible in the aquifers in which these folks are trying to drill 48 wells.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up?
Karen Geisler.
Geisler? Please come on down, state your full name and your address for the record.
My name is Karen Geisler, 15990 in Boden Road. I am directly across from the proposed area. She said basically what all our neighbors have been feeling, that this is not an appropriate section of, for what we have. They're trying to pretend that, oh yeah, we're improving your neighborhood. No. There have been three new homes being, been built on 152nd and Emboden that are on 35 acres or more. These are beautiful homes. I'm sure that nobody in the area objects to them. The newest home being built is on Watkins, North Watkins, in 160th. It is an absolutely gorgeous home, big and beautiful. Nobody objects to that. We do object to the small lots. We are asking that they be over 10 acres, which in your study would be, I guess, an A2. I'm not well-studied in that. What I do know is that I have lived there since 2006. The water that they have talked about, she says that there is not enough water. I don't honestly know about the water. We have water, we have pressure. My problem is, the water is not good. I last night took a, a testing of the TDSs from the water, and it was over 700 units. And then now drinking water is only, the very worst drinking water is 500. I had to put in a filtration system in my home, a very extensive filtration system. I am the only person, most of the people are on a community well, I am on a private well right across from their place. I had to put in an extensive water system to make my water drinkable. And I was not told, we have to, in the system that we have, which was put in by a guy that put in a system for the Pepsi-Cola people, that our water still is bad. We have to change filters on our water system monthly. And it comes out crummy and, and bad. I do have others. So there is water, I presume, for farming, but not for drinking, and this wells for everybody's wells. They wouldn't know that they're coming in to bad water unless they were told. I only have 23 seconds. I just, your take, putting this in the middle of what we have is not appropriate for our neighborhood. We have good neighbors that we are, smallest lots, 10 acres, 11 acres, I have over 11 acres on my lot, and I back up to Farmer's Gun Club, I back up to Horse Creek Reservoir. I have beautiful places around me, but don't take away my country, you know? I'm there to retire in a country atmosphere. These people that don't, that are, they don't exist yet. They can pick out other neighborhoods, you know, to go, if they want little lots. But let's remain a country, country.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Who's next?
Stan Geisler.
Stan Geisler, would you like to speak? Already spoke, okay. Uh, next up.
That was everyone.
Is there anyone else that did not sign up but would still like to come on down? Feel free to come down. State your full name and your address for the record.
My name's Kurt Lackey. I live at 15770 Emboden Road, directly center of this area. I have a gorgeous view. The, sorry about being a little emotional today. It's my dad's 90th birthday, but he died 45 years ago. He got killed in a fire call. He was a Sheridan fireman. He would be 90 today. We recently had a fire at our house. The firemen came. Our garage was fully engulfed. We almost lost the whole house because the fire department ran out of water. If you have something like this built in a neighborhood, you drop two city blocks in the middle of a rural neighborhood and try to go with the fire department that has two people on duty with a fire truck. It took them eight minutes to get there, thank God. Two other companies from Hudson and Kingsburg showed up with water, or my whole house would have gone down. This whole section here was done on dry farming for 20 years. This is one reason that they ended up selling it. They had another section that they did not sell, that they have water wells on, that they can still grow stuff. This was a area that they needed to get rid of, a grow broke. The appearance of the sugar-coated egregious way that they've shown this as our neighborhoods, of neighborhoods next to each other, our houses are eight to a quarter mile apart from each other in this area. They're not right next to each other. They're not like they show in the picture. There's nothing even close to what they show in the picture. We have a awesome view of the mountains, and it would be totally covered. The appearance of what that is across the road, normally during the fall, when the lake is full, we'll get, I'd say, over 2,000 to 20,000 geese sitting out there in the field. We have over two dozen deer that run across our backyard two or three times a week. We have six eagles that live in the trees right behind us. We have more owls than I could count. There are thousands of geese on the lake all the time. There's a few hundred pelicans always around. There's hawks that I, I, there's, there's hawks everywhere. They're all over the, the city. We have, the water has been totally misrepresented in this. We have a time limit. We were given two minutes, or three minutes, you know, in what we had last time. And the other people got to ramble on like an old rickety wagon. And then we didn't get in to come back on after they said there was water, which we know there's not. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else that did not sign up that would like to come speak? And then we bring it back to the board for action. Commissioner?
Well, I think you have your light on. I have a comment. Okay. So I have a couple comments and a question. I just wanna thank you, everyone, who came out and testified. We are continuing. During that continuance, we do read the emails we get, and they get included in the formal packet. So I am sure you're aware, but if someone could raise your hand from staff to where public comment emails could be sent. Leila, is that you? So if you don't have Leila's email, please make sure you get it so that your documentation can be included. I understand it's really difficult to come out in the middle of the day, and I want to honor your time, and we'd love to have you back. But if you have neighbors or other folks or other information, please make sure to include that public comment. We've been very sensitive this year in discussing a lot about ways for folks to have public comment. I also want to make folks aware, I don't know if you're using this already, but our health department does do water well testing. And so if you have done that testing, and you, or you need to reach out to the Adams County Health Department, again, staff can connect you, and then you can forward that information with your public comment as well as an attachment to the email. And if you have any information, such as reports from the fire department on what it was like to respond to a fire, and had any information, you can forward any of those comments to Leila, to the team. The staff is very good about including those in our packet, and we all do look at them before we have public hearings. So thank you so much for taking time to make comment. Developers in these circumstances often do negotiations with the neighborhood in an attempt to find a place of agreement. attempt to find a place of agreement, though I always encourage that. We have this opportunity for a continuance, and I'm glad that we have this time for folks to gather their thoughts and for the developer to reach out to the neighbors.
Okay. Commissioner Baca.
I don't have anything additional to add than Commissioner Pinter's already stated. What is the proposed date for continuance?
The applicant is requesting December fifth.
December fifth? We pull up the screen that talks about?
I do not have a screen. This continuance was requested just right before this hearing.
Okay, we got it.
Okay. All right. So I make a motion to continue this case, PRC twenty-twenty-three dash fifteen, The Horse Creek Retreat, to a date specific of December fifth, twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a continuation of this hearing to December. We gonna do a vote? We need a second. We, we're back up. Not for you? Okay, let's do a voice vote.
Commissioner Pinter?
Yes.
Commissioner Baca?
Yes.
Commissioner Odoriusio?
Yes. Okay. Please work with the neighbors, as well as the other homework that you guys said you were going to do. Thank you very much. I believe that's it. We adjourned.
I know we just adjourned. Commissioner, we got a email from one of your colleagues, Doug Edelston, about needing to talk with us. Do you need, do you think he needs?
I think his thought was just to share information.
A written update is fine. Okay, cool. Thank you.
But if you, if you all decide you want one, we can go into it later today.